Second order of business is to approve the order of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson has been moved to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of January twentieth, twenty twenty. They have been distributed.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Simmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as distributed for January twentieth, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is the building permits. Building permits report has been distributed. Are there any questions?
It will be approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jurdavich, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the building permit report as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda. It has been distributed with the regular agenda. We have items A through F on the consent agenda. What is your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one. Public hearing and first reading of the Wild's eighteenth edition. A replat and rezoning from R two, limited multiple dwellings to R dash one S M, mixed one and two family dwellings. Mr. Silber, excuse me.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, this application was received to make some minor lot line adjustments. Unfortunately, the minor lot line adjustments resulted in needing to take some space off of a larger R two zone lot. This requires rezoning and thus there is a requirement for a public hearing related to that amendment of the zoning map. Regarding the minor changes, have not resulted in any major changes to the utility plan. However, prior to consideration of the final platwa, city engineer review and approve an updated utility and drainage plan. Outside of that, staff along the planning commission has no concerns and is recommending the first reading be held tonight after a public hearing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Silber. Are there any questions of Mr. Silber? Alright. We'll move on to the regular agenda and at this time I'll call a public hearing on the Wild's eighteenth edition, a replat and rezoning from R two to limited multiple dwellings to R dash one S M, mixed one and two family dwellings. Is there anyone here from the public this evening that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone here from the public this evening that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone from the public this evening that would like to speak this issue? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We are now back on the regular agenda for the first reading.
Make a motion for our first reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsten. Is there a second, please? Commissioner Simmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to put this on first reading on the Wild's eighteenth edition, a replat and rezoning of R two, limited multiple dwellings to R dash one S M, mixed one and two family dwellings. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number two is a public hearing and first reading on the rezoning from R dash R, rural residential district, to see light commercial located at two hundred and twenty-five Fortieth Avenue West. Mr. Silber.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, this application was received in order to accommodate redevelopment of a platted lot in Nelson Acres at the corner of Cheyenne Street and Fortieth Avenue. Although the property is currently developed as a residential property, there have been significant changes in the surrounding area in recent years. Any development of this site, if redeveloped or as it currently stands, would require here, it's with the city's landscape standards, which includes buffering from adjacent uses as well as the C O corridor overlay district. This includes increased site and building standards and is common when you see commercial development, Thirteenth, Thirty-second, Fortieth, Cheyenne, Veterans Boulevard. Surrounding uses here include a city shop, water tower, and recycle drop-off to the west, retention pond to the south, and residential to the north and east. Regarding consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, staff found strong support in the area of mixing uses within an otherwise low-dense development by increasing commercial opportunity. Consideration toward compatibility should be considered, however, due to the location and some of the protections of the landscaping standard and the corridor overlay district, our concern was a little bit more limited. In addition to the emails that we provided in your packet, we did receive one more today, which was handed out before you, at the meeting. Concerns regarding noise and potential uses here are things that I think should be considered during the public hearing and deliberated upon. However, at their January fourteenth meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing and reviewed the application. Didn't have anybody stand up at that time in opposition, however, they reviewed their emails that we received and still are providing their recommendation for approval of the application with the conditions noted in the staff report, including that first one, that consideration of any public comment regarding the change be given. I assume there may be some tonight at the public hearing and also the emails that you received. And also that the existing access be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to a final building permit. That's currently taking place right now. Our city engineer discussed with the applicant some options on how that might look in the future if they were to redevelop. Again, this is a rezoning proposed for light commercial. If they do come in for development, they'd have a building permit required. Even if it's not much for the building, it's still a change of use. We'd have to review that and we would go through the typical procedure we go through at that time, so. With that, the public hearing is scheduled tonight and proposed first reading. If first reading is approved, the second reading would follow up shortly thereafter, so.
Thank you, Mr. Silber. Are there any questions of Mr. Silber?
I'm sorry, did you say that after the first reading, you would follow up with this, these people?
So I'm hoping that-
You've just got a lot of questions. I'm just wondering-
Yeah, well, so Commissioner Simmons, I did follow up just shortly with a brief email today, hoping that she'd be available tonight to speak if she has some concerns on it. I did also say that some of the concerns that she noted, we would address during the building permit process. Just a straight rezoning to light commercial opens up a lot of opportunities for how they could develop it. So that's something you should also keep in mind is if, I think the proposal that they've submitted is pretty, you know, compatible with adjacent uses, but still it's a straight zoning, so it could be rezoned to something else. However, the light commercial district, the uses in there aren't the type of heavy, type of intense uses that might be a major nuisance as long as those buffering standards are in place. So, answer, short answer to your question, yes, I will respond to those, but a lot of them are dealing with the building permit.
But she also will have the opportunity to come back anyway for second reading.
Yeah, well, tonight's the best opportunity and I did make sure she was aware of that, so.
Okay, thank you.
And if, I should also add too, if somebody does get in touch with us after the public hearing is closed, we always will forward those emails to you. So if they're not happy with the result of tonight, they'd still have an opportunity that I would probably present or definitely present anything that came forward, so.
Additional questions from Mr. Silber? Mr. Thorsten.
Tim, does the city own the lots to the south of these properties? Looks like the lot, in my picture, on the water tower goes down quite a ways south. About the little lot to the south of this one, is that a city-owned lot as well?
Yeah, that's a city-owned retention pond and list station, right Dustin? To the very far south end of that, right here.
Presently being used as a snow dump site, too.
So this, this whole lot would be surrounded by city-owned property then?
Yes, with the exception of, to the east of Rightaway, there's homes there and then north of Rightaway, there's homes there.
Additional questions for Mr. Silber? Thank you. At this time, I'll close the regular agenda and we'll move into the public hearing again. Public hearing is being held on the rezoning from rural residential district to see light commercial located at twenty-two, twenty, or two twenty-five Fortieth Avenue West. Is there anybody who, from the public, that would like to speak to this issue this evening? Lady Pierce. If you'd please step to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Jody Callis and we're actually working on purchasing the property. I just wanted to let you know we're here for answering any questions you may have that didn't get forwarded through Tim, so. He did forward me the email of the woman that had concerns and I have not had an opportunity to respond, but the previous two, we did write back, or at least one of those got a response directly from us and we will follow up with her as well, so. I can just reassure you, it's not meant for a heavy industrial use at all. It's more of a boutique with just light retail traffic and that's what it's intended for. So I know a lot of her concerns were kind of more construction-based and it's not meant for that kind of a use, at least in our terms of the proposal that we have for it, so. I can, I can say that I will reassure her that we're going to be respectful of the noise.
Thank you, Mrs. Callis. Is there any questions from the commissioners, from Mrs. Callis?
Just a-
Thorsten.
Quick question. On your site plan, you have, looks like bins for like rock and stuff like that. And like you said, we've gotten three or four emails regarding noise. How frequently would you anticipate you'd have to have a dump truck to bring in inventory?
I mean, that depends on how many people are going to be buying, but the bins are going to stock one dump truck full and that's it. With the exception of the dirt might be slightly larger, but they're meant to be small stockpiles and not for heavy commercial use. They're more for the surrounding neighborhood for people to purchase small mulch and rock quantities and also to show people samples of the, our large commercial stockpiles are going to be at our commercial location off of Seventh Ave North and Ninth Street. So we're going to keep the heaviest use of that stuff. If there's somebody that comes with a trailer, we'll be loading them with like a small tool cat. There won't be a lot of backup alarms or anything like that. It'll be like half-yard increments, so they'll be very small. And I would really strongly question whether they'd even hear us dumping the single bucket.
Periodically, it's not a daily thing.
Yeah, not all day long.
Dump trucks will be in there and-
Correct.
And loaders loading up stuff, so.
No loaders. We may park a payloader down there during snow removal, but it would be for just keeping it there until it's being used off-site for removal on the south end of town. But it would just be for storage of that, not for use.
Thank you.
No questions of Mrs. Callis, Mr. Simmons?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to make the comment that I'm glad that you're reaching out to your neighbors because most of the time that is where the problem lies as far as communicating. I'm assuming this individual probably thinks it's going to be a construction site with trucks coming and going, so. Just continue that and I'd appreciate it. I think that's the way to go.
We did send a letter with our proposal and I believe it got passed along to all of the close-by neighbors and anybody that's had a concern, we've tried to reach out to. So it's meant to be more of a community place, so that-
Because they're going to be buying your products, so.
Right. We don't want anybody to be upset.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from Mrs. Callis? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Sir, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
My name's Jason Op. I live in forty-four thirty Newport Lane in the Westport Beach community. What the map doesn't show further to the west is the Westport Beach community, which is a fairly dense community with a lot of children, a lot of young families. The road, Fortieth Avenue, the intersection there already has a lot of traffic. So one of the issues that I'm concerned about is the additional traffic that's going to be created with the business. The only access into that property right now is on Fortieth Avenue, which also crosses a bike path or a walking path. One of the other concerns is throughout the community, there aren't many business access points that cross a bike path or a walking path. Obviously, we've got access that crosses a sidewalk, but not any type of designated walking path or bike path that's set back from the road. So there's a concern with that. The other concern is, as Mr. Silber said, all of the surrounding properties are city-owned and outside of that, we've got all residential properties. This one property is being considered to be rezoned light commercial. And it just sits on an island all by itself. Everything else around it is residential. Once it's rezoned light commercial, like Mr. Silber said, whether the Callises maintain their business with it or not, it's rezoned light commercial. Within this residential area, you've got this one property. What happens to it after it's rezoned light commercial, we don't have control over. You've got established neighborhoods and what they do with it after it's rezoned, it's up to them. So you've got established neighborhoods, people bought properties, knowing that that was a residential property, there's nothing we can do about it. Right? Once it's rezoned light commercial, it's done. So whether they keep their landscaping business there or they sell it and it becomes a salvage yard or a McDonald's, there's no control over that. That's a big concern. And it's one property that can be rezoned light commercial amongst all of those residential neighborhoods. That's a big concern. It just doesn't seem right that we'd rezon one property all by itself, surrounded by city property, surrounded by residential. It just doesn't make sense. So when you look at the grand scheme of things in that area, when you zoom out the map, it's all by itself. It just, it doesn't seem logical. So that's the only point that I want to-
Thank you, Mr. Op. Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Op. I have a question for you, so.
Absolutely.
So thank you. So we have, we have city property, obviously to the west, we have our water tower, our building, and we own the land to the south. So this is by itself in that corner.
Yep.
I'm just curious, what you would suggest hypothetically, what would go in there that would be a good fit?
City could make an offer for it. I'm sure the city would use more land. You know, absolutely, more green space. You know, I'm sure-
More residential apartments?
Anything, you know, I don't have a great suggestion, but you know, the big concern is, you know, access, accessing Fortieth Avenue there across that bike path. You know, we see it already with that, the dumpsters and the recycling. You know, people coming in and out of there, you know, frequently across those bike paths, especially towards the evening. You know, my kids use that bike path, I use that bike path. You know, that increase in traffic across that, it's a scary thing. So, you know, just, I don't have a great suggestion for you. I just know that I'm concerned about it.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm just curious when, when the citizens come forward, I'd rather hear some solutions as well into what your thought process is. You know, we do have a bike path on the other side of the road as well, so.
Yeah, absolutely, you do. Yeah, and it's great and they both get used. You know, they were awesome when they got put in. And it's a beautiful property, you know, it is. I just, I don't, I can't tell you what a great use for it would be, but the fact that it's surrounded by city property, the logical thing for me to say would be that the city would want to have it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from Mr. Op? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Please, sir, step up. Please state your name and address.
Yep, Matt Sturliksen, forty-five nineteen Fourth Street West in West Fargo, actually Nelson Acres down there. First of all, thank you all for hearing this. I know it's not an easy decision when you're talking about the city and the change that we're trying to do. A couple of things that I do want to address. Number one, the notice goes out to anybody within a hundred and fifty feet. Anybody that knows that area, that knows Nelson Acres, our lots are six hundred feet long by three hundred feet wide. So nobody out there got this notice. The only reason that we know about it is because of social media. So that's how it came into me. So just something to keep in mind when we're discussing that future property. Obviously, there's been concerns with traffic, increased traffic, the kids coming down the sidewalk, that's a concern. From a Nelson Acres perspective, we've, Tim, we've had conversations about covenants and whatnot down there, that we were zoned as single-dwelling homes. We purchased down there for that reason. We purchased down there as rural residential so that we could have horses and that type of lifestyle. So if you go out there, you'll see there are property owners that have horses in larger lots. So I think it definitely impacts us because, again, this property is on the corner of Nelson Acres. No matter how you phrase it, this was Nelson Acres number one. I also question how this falls into the West Fargo two dot O. Part of that is clearly defined borders for our residential properties. Well, we do have clearly defined borders. This would not fit into that. And then the last concern, obviously, is from a property value perspective. We do have significant property values out there with the space that we've got. At some point, you know, if we do want to sell, having commercial property that comes in. And again, if this does go to commercial, one of the uses for, or permitted uses as part of, what, four twenty-seven dot two, is for a nightclub. So, as you've all seen on Cheyenne, when we do road construction, those businesses tend to struggle down there because the foot traffic or the drive-up traffic goes away. While a garden center might sound nice today, when we start going from Fortieth all the way down to Fifty-second, what's the traffic going to be going in there? And if this greenhouse does go under, do we want a nightclub in our backyard? Because that's what it is, it's in our backyard. I can tell you that I don't want that around my children. I don't think the neighborhoods want that around their children. And to further clarify, there is actually residential on three of the four sides of that property. So, just because it is a corner. So I think there's a, I think there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen before this is put over to a commercial-type property to go in advance, if you're going to ask me the question, what should go in there? You know, it's a difficult situation because it is an odd development. Now, had the city taken that portion of land, we wouldn't be talking about this. But instead, we've got the behind-the-scenes, you know. So from a commercial perspective, with the city growing the way that it is, maybe that is a good purchase for the city. But, and then really the last concern that I have on this is what kind of precedence does this set? There are little houses all up and down Cheyenne that look just like this. Are we going to start just approving commercial properties on all of them? It doesn't seem to be very planned out. It seems to be kind of a pop-up, oh hey, let's do this commercial because we can get some revenue for it. So, and I'm all for progress in the city. I think West Fargo definitely needs to look at that. I just don't think that this spot is a good spot for it.
Sir, could you restate your last name, please, for this extra?
Sturliksen, S T U R L A U G S O N.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Mrs. Callis, one more time and keep it short, please.
There seems to be a lot of concern about traffic and neighbors. I just wanted to point out and reassure people in the audience more than anything. My home is in Hidden Circle, which is about three blocks to the north. I have a two-year-old and a six-month-old and this property and what we're proposing to use it for is going to be very child-friendly. So the bike path that keeps getting addressed, our use of maybe some public coming in with a trailer or pickups is going to be very comparable to the neighboring lot of the recycle center. And the bike traffic is actually, we want to welcome that. We have the proposal that we've put forth has a connection to that bike path because some of the proposed use of what we're hoping to use it for is classes, especially in the summertime for grade school kids, gardening and other things, and we want that connection to the bike path. That's one of the things that I loved about the property and the reason we made the purchase agreement in the first place. So that is crucial to our business and it's not that we are trying to offend the neighborhood by moving it to a commercial use, but I just wanted to reassure again, this is a very key opportunity for us and there isn't anything like this. This is meant to complement the area itself. There isn't a nursery and garden center on the south end of town. There just isn't. And I'm trying to provide a service to people as well as expand our business a little bit and this is a very good opportunity for us to do so. And again, just reassure that this is not meant to be an offensive proposal and we're very conscious of the little children and everything else that's going on. So I hope that we can help work together to make sure that it's successful and doesn't go under. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Callis. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue, sir?
Yeah, my name's John Yunus. I live at thirty-eight, thirty-seven, Third Street East and I think that this is a, I'll be brief. I think it's a phenomenal repurpose of this property. There's a lot of new homes that have been built in this area and as she just mentioned, there really aren't any options for families if they want to go buy some plants to help improve the look of the outside of their house. And I just think it's a great option for this intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Yunus. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue this evening? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We'll move back to the regular agenda. Purpose of this evening of this item number two was a public hearing, which we've just conducted, and the first reading of the rezoning of rural residential district to see light commercial. Mr. Silber, do you have anything additional for us?
Not at this time.
Any other public comment?
Could offer an option, if you want.
Sure.
Go plant unit development and restrict the use to what is proposed by the Callises. It would add additional time to their timetable. I guess the reason we didn't do that is because of the compatible, compatibility we felt the commercial, light commercial zoning district, along with our city's landscaping standards provides. So we have some confidence in what we already have available to make properties compatible. We have a lot of areas in town where there's commercial property adjacent to residential. It's a difficult thing, though, and the people that spoke tonight had a lot of good comments. Of course, they have concern about what could potentially redevelop is a serious concern. So if that neighborhood feels it's very important to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, and then integrity of the neighborhood means only certain types of things, then the city commission has the option to pursue a PUD. However, I think staff feels pretty confident in the current ordinance is available to us.
Thank you, Mr. Silber. Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Thorsten?
Dustin, is this a right-in, right-out only? There is no left turn in on Fortieth?
It's a good question, Commissioner Thorsten. Yes, today that is actually a full access. The median is stopped just shy of that driveway. However, one of my first comments in reviewing this was that I'd like to merge the driveway that basically serves a recycle facility with this lot and eliminate that residential driveway approach. So, thank you, Tim. So basically, I'd like to eliminate this or at least make sure it is a right-in, right-out and have a three-quarter access come in from here, which the applicant is willing to construct and make these modifications as part of their improvements. Again, that will restrict some of the conflicts or minimize some of the conflict points, if you will, and try to keep the access primarily at that location, so. We have yet to actually put anything on paper. That was just a brief conversation I have with the applicants after the planning and zoning meeting. But again, I would not want this developing as anything more than what it is today with a full access here. So we will have to work through that before it's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Additional questions? Additional questions?
Mr. Trudovic. So, I guess my question comes down to, and maybe it's a bigger question, but Mr. Sturlickson, not saying that right, I apologize, but your comment, you know, I kind of wrote down this piecemeal rezoning that I do think we're at risk of in this part of town. I mean, there are a lot of houses at major intersections just to the south of this. I think there's a property that's also for sale or going to be for sale that is being talked about, at least by the Realtor, I think, as a commercial redevelopment of where a home sits today. You know, I'm a firm believer that, you know, if you buy a house next to what is a house, that it's a safe assumption that it's going to be a house. So, I do think some of these neighbors have, you know, pretty good, have a vested interest. I guess my question, and I'm not sure who can answer this, but what about the argument around property valuation? I mean, I think, you know, if this was right in somebody's backyard and something went in there, I mean, I think that is a strong argument that really kind of hits home with me. So, have we ever looked into trying to figure that out?
Thank you, Commissioner Trudovic. We have, we've had that comment on a grander scale and not such a small scale. I'd say that if this property were adjacent to a home without the right-of-way, and there's substantial right-of-way here at Cheyenne Street and 40th Avenue for the other adjacent homeowners, I'd probably have more of an inclination when they walk in the door to say, you have to go PUD. Because we don't know, we want to protect that a little bit. So, the property in particular that you're talking about that has come in, we've said, yeah, commercial potentially, if the neighborhood accepts it, could be okay, but you got to go PUD. We got to know what it is in that case, so.
You know, full transparency of the PUD makes me more comfortable with this. I'd be curious about the couple of people that spoke.
Yeah, I'm not opposed.
Whether that would address a significant portion of their concern or not, you know, because I guess, you know, I think in my own case, you know, if I had a house next to what's being proposed, I might not have too much of an issue with that. But if all of a sudden it's sold and the example of a nightclub goes in there, that is definitely more of a concern.
Yeah, I guess my stance on that, and I'd let anybody else speak if it were up to the Commissioner President, my response to that is absolutely, PUD doesn't bother me one bit. It was just a statement that I feel the light commercial district and our buffering standards in this specific situation is maybe acceptable. But if a PUD is comfortable for the applicant, we could transition this application now into going back to City, our Planning Commission for the detailed development plans, which essentially they're done, and then come back to you again with the first reading for a PUD. So, I'd go through a little bit more process, about a month and a half, two of us, that's no problem. I don't know the applicant if that's a problem.
I think both people that spoke against this certainly brought, you know, what it could further redevelop into as at least one of their major concerns. And if the access point piece was kind of resolved, I feel like that addresses a lot of, maybe not all of the concern, but a good portion of it.
If I could, to Commissioner President and Commissioner Trudovic to speak to, like, we are concerned about spot zoning. Spot zoning is deemed unconstitutional, essentially. This is a two-and-a-half acre piece of land adjacent to what are sort of heavier uses surrounding it, directly adjacent to it. So, we felt confident that this was not spot zoning. However, when we also look at the comp plan, West Fargo 2.0, a lot of discussion revolves around increasing mix of uses in areas of town. This area of town has essentially one type of use, residential. The idea behind that is so we don't want people to leave their neighborhood to have to get goods and services or go to work. We want people to be able to get these goods and services or go to work within their neighborhoods so that we're avoiding people just getting in their car and driving out of town. That's the biggest crux of this, which leads me to encourage development within neighborhoods. Now, how it comes together, because we haven't updated all of our ordinances, we have to sometimes lean toward a PUD. In this case, I felt we didn't need to, but on the case south toward into the wild a little bit, absolutely would have to go to a PUD. But I see no problem going into a PUD here. That would be completely acceptable and would probably be beneficial.
Thank you, Mr. Soberg.
Commissioner Simmons? So, Tim, that's actually the question I was going to ask you as far as the PUD goes. I don't think you folks would want the city to buy this just to put out more trash cans, bins, recycling bins. I don't think that would be good. I like the idea of what you're doing. I think it'll work. However, if it doesn't work, I want to make sure we're all protected, especially those citizens. So, by going to PUD, I think would work very well. The only question I have about the PUD is how far does that go? You know, right now, we go, what, 150 feet or whatever we live, how far? I don't remember how far the PUD goes. I'm assuming it probably won't reach the people in Nelson's Acres anyway. However, the city can take control of a PUD and make up the requirements, correct?
Yes.
So, we could protect the citizens of that area by working with you with a PUD, and the city would require it so if something should happen, somebody else cannot come in and just build what they want.
Yeah, in this case, we'd probably do a, build a PUD to restrict use.
Right.
I think our buffer standards probably provide enough buffering requirement. It's 50 feet. It's a pretty large buffer yard, or 25-foot with a fence.
So, what I'm saying is we could assure them, we could protect that area.
Yeah.
By doing a PUD. And I don't think that would honestly hurt you at all if you're willing to go a PUD way. You'd have to look into it.
It probably hurts the purchase more than anything right now.
Pardon?
Probably hurts the purchase more than anything right now.
Right. So, what do you mean, hurt the purchase?
They're, however, they're purchasing the property.
Oh, they're financing, you mean?
Yeah. The timing, I assume, would be the biggest problem.
Oh, pardon? The process.
Because they're adding a month or a month and a half to the process.
I think.
But that's, to the city, in all honesty, and no offense to the applicant here, that's not our concern. Our concern is doing what's right for the neighborhood and what's right for the city. So, with all due respect to the applicant, that's honestly, we don't, that's not our concern.
We need to protect that area. So, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Just one quick question. If this was a PUD, could they still put the similar business in there?
That would be up to the Commission and the public hearing process. So, like I said, I think I would restrict it primarily on use. So, you would take the light commercial uses and pare it down to what this process determines is acceptable.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from Mr. Soberg?
If I could, again, Your Honor, maybe giving Ms. Callis an opportunity to speak to that. PUD would be nice, that I know there's.
Will it be acceptable? Mrs. Callis, would you like to address that?
Thank you for another opportunity to speak. Based on the financing that we've received and the owner that's currently living there, he has another property that he's purchasing and closing on on the 17th. So, that was all hinging on this property being approved at tonight's meeting because it was given very positive feedback, I think, on the previous meeting, 14th, I believe that was. So, everything was written in the agreement that we needed, he already had pushed it, and as far as he was concerned, the owner, and has another property hinging on this. And if we're not able to close within that timeframe, that really hurts him the most out of anyone. So, I would have really wanted it to work, but if we had to extend it again, we may not have the same opportunity, and the financing may fall through. So, it may not even come to you as a PUD request if we get that far. I'll have to push for that, but I'm not certain that we can do that to him again. And Dwayne is not, unfortunately, not here to speak to that. But I know that his intention was to close as soon as the 10th, so that he could make the other purchase that he has hinged on this. And I'm not sure how far out the PUD puts us additionally, but somebody said maybe a month and a half. We can continue to try to work with that, but it pushes into our timeline of actually getting it functional for our first season as well. So, that's going to hurt our first year of business, and it may not be lucrative for us to pursue because the main months of business are May and June for that type of actual facility. So, we may put our resources elsewhere.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, ma'am. I was just going to tell you, what's her name again?
Mrs. Callis.
Mrs. Callis, I was going to tell you, I'm very comfortable with what you're doing, but I'm not comfortable with allowing this. If something should happen, so you know, or my reasoning, if something should happen, we open the floodgates here, and that makes me very uncomfortable, so.
I did have a question. So, if it's a, because we still have to get approval for what they call the change of use. So, we still have more process to go through after acquiring the property. This was just hinged on us acquiring the property, getting that change, approval for the commercial. If another person came in and wanted to do a nightclub, wouldn't they have to do a change of use anyways, and that could be denied? Is, am I misunderstanding how that works because?
That's a building permit, so it doesn't go through this process.
But they could be denied based on feedback from the neighborhood if that came about after, if our business did fail.
If we did a PUD.
But if we were in here and did a nursery and garden center and it failed, and we had to leave, and someone bought the property and wanted to put a McDonald's or an apartment, wouldn't that have to get a building permit and get reapproved and everything through a similar process?
So, that's where the light commercial zoning district allows that use to occur by right. So, they wouldn't have to come into this body for the entitlement, or this is the entitlement phase. You're, once you get this done, you're able to go in and get a building permit.
You're asking for a zoning change, so you're the main primary ones. And that's like, or that's my concern, is that you're asking for a zoning change, and if we allow that, that opens anybody after you, should you sell that property? They don't have to come in front of us anymore. So, that's the concern. I would ask the question, Tim, and I'm going to assume this, that because I think the boundaries would not reach the people in Nelson Acres and so forth, so I would think it would be all city because we're around there. I want to ask the people in the back, if this is something, you know, we could maybe speed the process up for you, but would you be okay if we wanted a PUD? Would that take some of the concerns off you, knowing that the city would have the right to determine what goes there? Just to kind of speed things along here tonight, so you know, okay.
Mr. Robb, you're nodding also. All right, thank you.
Tim, how long do you, I'm sorry, mayor, can I ask this? Tim, how long do you, do you think, knowing that the PUD would basically be us sitting here, how long, what would the, would that speed up that timeframe a little bit for her?
Yeah, I can, my timing for it would be that I would have it at Planning Commission next, I think I can do it next Tuesday because it's already had a public hearing for rezoning. We just transitioned the rezoning. So, we'd have next Tuesday, the 11th, would be Planning and Zoning Commission consideration. I will put a public hearing notice for another public hearing at City Commission whenever we determine what the next meeting is. So, that would be a new first reading and public hearing. So, if it's on the 18th, if we have it on the 18th, we would potentially, I think I'd maybe have a hard time with that because I do have to have two weeks and a notice. So, it probably still would be March 2nd, then would be that next public hearing.
And how long are we out right now?
So, now that pushes us back about two to three weeks.
Okay, so.
Very highly.
I don't think that's a long time to go. If we can get it done within a month, I mean, hopefully, you could work that out. Is it going to really affect you, I don't think, other than your, you know, your financing part, I get that.
Bumps it back a month.
As far as what you're going to do anyway, I think you're going to do a good job there, so I guess, do we need a motion to that effect, or do we need to, what do you need, mayor, on this one? I do need an action light upon the first reading. So, what would you recommend? How would we do this, Tim? Do we deny this, and then?
I would, I would, I think to make them feel more comfortable, I would offer that a recommendation be proposed that they pursue a PUD. It's an action item, but really just gives them at least some assurance that five commissioners would agree with that, if you agree.
Okay, I would make that motion.
Second? I'm with. And moved, and secondly, moved by Commissioner Simmons, second by Commissioner Thorsted, to accept the first reading, the rezoning from Rural Residential District to see.
Nope.
No?
Nope.
A PUD?
Sorry.
No. Procedurally, political, parliamentary procedure requires we act on first on the item that's in front of us.
Oh, so that you need a motion, sorry.
Well, I don't want to put words in Commissioner Simmons' mouth, but I think he was moving for a recommendation regarding the PUD. The first reading, if you failed to get a motion for the first reading, that would die. You could make, you could make a motion to deny, if Commissioner Simmons wanted to amend his motion, could make a motion to deny the first reading and recommend they go to a PUD.
Make that motion. Okay. That's what he said.
But we do not have to deal with the rezoning first?
Well, you could combine them into the same motion that you're.
That's my point, is that we're changing zoning, so we had to deal with the zoning issue first, and then that should be the second one.
Yeah, and you could make it as part of your motion to.
Should be done from parliamentary procedure. So, you need a motion to deny the first one, mayor, is that what you're saying? No, we need a motion to, for the first reading for the rezoning, and just leave it at that, and then the second part of the, a second one for this being a PUD. Okay? I want two motions.
That's my motion.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes, help us out.
Commissioner Simmons, you may want to make a motion to deny the first reading.
I'll make a motion to deny the first reading. I'll second that.
Commissioner Thorsted, second, been moved and seconded to deny the first reading. Is there any further discussion? Bring them, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Next order of business.
Now, I'll make a motion to put this onto a PUD.
Yeah, recommend a PUD for the property.
Commissioner Thorsted, seconds again. Commissioner Simmons made the motion, been moved and seconded to have this property into a PUD at 22, 225 40th Avenue West. Is there any further discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, mayor, Tim, Mr. Mayor, is that all right?
Commissioner, please.
Thank you. You don't need to come back out, just going to, after, you maybe want to kind of explain what we did to Ms. Callis, just so she understands it's not all a bad deal here. I mean, we'll move this forward, get this done for her, so.
Our next order of business is item number three, the executive summary for the core area infrastructure master plan. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioner President Dardis and members of the Commission. Well, I'm excited to bring forward a presentation of our core area infrastructure master plan. The, the last time I believed that you heard an update was this past summer, so, you know, this last fall, the draft of the final documents were delivered to the city, and as we started reviewing the draft of the final documents, we decided to make some changes. And so, the past couple of months here, we've been working with our consultant, Advanced Engineering, on revising those documents. And over the last couple of weeks, we hit a point where we were finished, and we do at this point have two hard copy documents in our office, as well as a digital copy of all the deliverables that were required by contract to be given to the city, which includes things like an updated water model, so on and so forth. So, in your packets, you do have an executive summary that Advanced Engineering prepared, and I will turn it over to Kellen Grubb, who's going to walk through the presentation here, and then I will come back up to the Commission and answer questions. I do want, before Kellen gets started, I do want to just kind of remind the Commission and everyone listening that, you know, this document really is going to be used as a great technical resource in the planning and implementation of our City Capital Improvement Plan. So, this here does not, I guess, formally approve projects necessarily. This is, again, a document now that we are going to have as a good resource as we move forward here to the plan, all of our improvements in this core area. So, as Kellen's given the presentation, feel free to stop, ask questions. Again, I'll just be out to the side, and I will come when he's finished and address the Commission. With that, Kellen?
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thanks, Dustin. Good evening, Commissioner President Dardis and members of the Commission. My name is Kellen Grubb, and I am with Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services. I'm a project engineer, and I worked on this project since the beginning. So, I'll try and keep this pretty brief. So, just a brief background on the project. The figure on the left, that's the study area extends, so that's the project area that we studied. The southern boundary is 13th Avenue. Western boundary is Drain 21. The northern boundary is Main Avenue and just parts of, north of Main Avenue, and the eastern boundary is Ninth Street. When you look at that area, there's a lot of infrastructure in that area. There's 30. There's thirty-seven plus centerline miles of road, forty miles of water main and roughly sixty miles of uh, sanitary and storm sewer systems. Um, also, there's seventeen uh, lift stations in that study area, seven of them storm and ten of them sanitary. So when we look at the the core area master plan, project objectives, objective number one was to provide a comprehensive assessment of all the infrastructure in the core area. Objective number two was to identify improvement priorities and those are really projects and organize those improvement projects into a capital improvements plan, a prioritized capital improvements plan. And objective number three was to document everything thoroughly, all the details, uh, the process we used within a master plan, so the process can be replicated and utilized by city staff um, in other areas or other parts of town. So I'm gonna touch on three key project elements, the water system model, the storm water system model, and then the infrastructure assessment piece. So as Dustin mentioned, um, the city now has a calibrated water system distribution sys- uh, water system model and with that, you you can analyze um, existing system capacities. So that's analyze fire flow, analyze system pressure, analyze water age and how your top rates, how your towers operate and um, you know, how your your system operates as a whole. But it's it's also a really beneficial tool because you can utilize the model to evaluate future growth areas like new developments, but also areas of redevelopment, um, to make sure that you have the right sized water system infrastructure in place. Um, we also developed a storm water system model, so the core area is comprised of three watersheds. Uh, there's a Drain 21 watershed on the on the western edge, there's the Cheyenne River watershed and then um, that's right in the middle and then on the eastern edge, it's the Drain 45 watershed. And A to S was um, contracted to develop the Cheyenne River model where more engineering did the Drain 21 and Drain 45 uh, storm system models. Um, the two figures you see on on this slide, the figure on the left is uh, a figure of the existing condition, so that's that's a five-year storm event um, modeled around the existing infrastructure in the system. And then on the right, um, after the proposed improvements are in place, um, that's what a five-year storm event would look like and just to let you know, so a five-year event that was modeled for this study, it was roughly three point one inches of rain in a twenty-four hour period. So the storm water model is a really beneficial tool because um, you can identify your your flooding areas or your drainage issues and you can make improvements to make sure you're improving those areas. The last key element I'll highlight is the infrastructure assessment piece and this was a a large component of the project. So the infrastructure assessment, we conducted four individual system risk assessments uh, on on the infrastructure system. So that's the road system, the water main system, the sanitary sewer system and the storm water system. So includes all those all those different infrastructure systems. And then when you conduct a risk assessment, you really identify two components of of risk. You identify an asset's consequence of failure and an asset's likelihood of failure. So what's the consequence if that pipe were to fail and what's the likelihood of that pipe failing? Um, and when you combine those together, you can calculate a risk score and what we did is we, once the risk assessment was complete, the results were layered into constructable corridors to make sure that improvements were feasible and economical. Um, so the last thing I'll touch on is is the actual CIP, uh, so the ten-year capital improvements plan. The first way or the first um, thing I'm showing you here is is a capital improvements plan map. So this this shows the core area and all the individual corridors, um, the respective corridor risk scores, the storm water system recommended improvements from A to S and from more engineering and then also um, the project timing. So not not to get hung up on the project timing because as as Dustin mentioned, um, this this core area capital improvements plan will need to be integrated within the citywide capital improvements plan. So if the years on some of these projects change, the thing to focus on more is the actual project priority, which we're recommending. And those project priorities are shown in in a tabular view as well. Um, it's probably a little hard to see, but we, based on the results from the model and based on the results from the infrastructure assessment, we developed this list of project priorities in which we feel the project should be conducted first. And then um, there's there's a project highlighted there and we just wanted to show that each project recommendation that came that was included in the capital improvements plan came with a project cut sheet, um, so it's individual project form and then a project location map. So you can, the intent here is you can quickly take this information and move into preliminary preliminary design or or final design from here. Um, another way to just visualize the results from the capital improvements plan, this is just a chart showing um, doll estimated project costs by year and then um, total there were thirty-one projects identified in the capital improvements plan, in the core area capital improvements plan and over a ten-year period, that average annual investment, if you just take the total estimated project costs over a ten-year period was roughly seven point five million dollars. And then we weren't actually scoped to develop an infrastructure funding policy or an infrastructure funding program, um, but we did put in infrastructure infrastructure project funding considerations. So within the reports, and this wasn't in the executive summary, but within the report, there's a project funding matrix which has information on a lot of state and federal uh, water and wastewater grant programs that um, the intent is to, we're we're recommending you utilize those grant programs and loan programs and combine those with, you know, Prairie Dog and and other programs to get strategic with your infrastructure investments. And with that, I'd open it up for any questions and the the only other thing that I'd like to mention is that Dustin and I had an opportunity to co-author an article and it was featured in the American Public Works Association um, magazine, which was released last month. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify, Kellen and Ryan Grubb here authored that thing. I I just did a a quick review and and was uh, very proud to have my name on it, uh, very grateful uh, that that went out. But uh, again, Advance has done a great job with this uh, study. Uh, we've got a great uh, roadmap now to apply, uh, not only to this particular area, but integrate into uh, the citywide CIP as well as uh, Kellen briefly mentioned it, but you know, the technique used in this part of of the city uh, will be applied throughout the whole city in terms of analyzing um, and prioritizing the needs and and getting that that work done. So uh, again, been been a, you know, a great process. Um, I think we've learned a lot going through this and and I'm very excited now that we have a final document that we can start to implement. Uh, one key feature that that Kellen touched on it towards the end there was the financing. Um, I'm guessing one of the first questions that'll come up is, you know, what next? Really what's what's gonna uh, start to to drive not not just the core area, but the rest of the the capital improvements that we need to to do throughout the city is financing. And the uh, infrastructure financing policy will be something that um, comes before the commission here sooner than later. Uh, we've had staff level conversations on how we want to start to even bring that forward. Uh, but you know, that that's where we'll get very detailed on uh, what policies will be in terms of, you know, how do we um, fund a reconstruction project versus a new development project versus uh, uh, main arterial roadway urbanization project? So that's gonna be uh, coming very soon and I think that'll be quite honestly, a very challenging endeavor for the commission to go through and and really start to uh, get that groundwork done. So, uh, but with that, without further ado, uh, questions regarding the core area master plan study?
Gentlemen, questions from Mr. Scott or Mr. Grubb?
Just help us get the money.
Absolutely.
Very good, very good report.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you much.
Item number five is to review the change orders for improvement district number twenty-two fifty. I'm sorry, am I jumping ahead? Number four is a presentation regarding the procurement of new buildings.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. Um, for quite some time, I've been talking and commenting at commission meetings and mentioning to you in passing about the cramped spaces at City Hall, the um, the H-back systems that are falling apart, the sewer lines that don't empty out the way they should, on and on and on. Um, and back last June, we had a report from a company that we had come in and tell us, how much room do we have left so that we have a timeline of how much longer, what how can we utilize their space most efficiently to keep in this building as long as possible for the city hall? Now, this has nothing to do with the PD, the PD's fine, this we're talking all the rest of the city hall staffing coming down the hall. Um, Mr. Thorsted was involved in some of that, I know Mr. Simmons was involved in some of that and we've had numerous discussions with you guys. The outcome of that report basically said back last June that for approximately three hundred thousand dollars, we might be able to fit seven more people in City Hall. Um, we've already added more than seven and staff was able to find a way to do it and not have to have major reconstruction costs. Um, the second part of the report said for major remodeling, that would be around seven hundred thousand dollars plus, we could fit fourteen more people in the building. That would get us from up to approximately fifty employees was what they suggested and in actuality, right now, we're at fifty-two. We've um, our staff have, the planning department has moved into the old courtroom and rather than go through the expense of adding windows and all those types of things, they've been able to make do and get by. We're doubling up in offices, as you've all seen when you're doing the rat race trying to find where we are and you can't find us because we're moving every other day. Um, Courtney loves being out in the hallway. But um, the the reason I'm I'm bringing this up is because as we look through each year coming forward, it only gets more and more compacted and we're only talking to city hall departments. Um, I also did a staffing plan, got information from police and fire and and some from Public Works prior and the library, but those are those are on a separate keel from what we're talking about here, pretty much. Um, we're looking at right now, we're at around fifty-two employees, twenty-twenty-one, fifty-six. By the time we hit twenty-twenty-four, we'll be approximately sixty-three employees. Now that's depending on budgets and approvals and so on and so forth. But my point being that um, in talking with John and others, trying to find out what's the best way to move forward because taxpayers do not like public buildings being built. Um, but at the same time, there's a level of service that we need to be able to provide and we can't provide it if we're sitting on top of each other and and our building is just not functional. We've done every single thing we can, we've moved our reception people down to across from the police department, but still people have to take a long, long, long journeys down and get led through a couple sets of locked doors now to get down to some of the staff that they want to see. So with that in mind, um, we've been working back and forth about what are creative ways to do that. John has some ideas. We're not asking you to approve buildings tonight, we're asking you to consider the process that he's going to propose and have some discussion on it so we know of staff if we can start moving forward and then bringing more information forward to you. Um, the process takes so long and with the timelines that we have looming on us, pretty soon we'll be in the hallways and we're gonna have to rent space outside of City Hall. So that was our concern and I will let John take it away.
Thank you, Tina. Uh, so tonight, as Tina said, is uh, just an overview of some creative ideas on how to procure uh, new city buildings, including a city hall. Uh, when uh, the city administrator and city staff approached me, it was sort of this complex problem, how do we solve it? And I I wanted to take a step back and ask, over the next twenty to thirty years, what are really the city's needs? And city staff had identified potentially, uh, my question always is to a client that's looking at infrastructure, what are your needs long-term? Uh, there's a potential need for a city hall, a potential need for a public works building, a potential need for a fire station just because of the growth of the city and as we experience more urbanization, you're gonna have denser growth. And so uh, really thinking about what's what's a better way to procure buildings, uh, what's a better way to promote some public transparency, uh, and looking at what some other really innovative cities have tried to accomplish and meeting this really complex environment that we operate in now, uh, with the public looking looking closely at how taxpayer dollars are spent. And so I came up with the, this is an extraordinary innovation initiative for the city, uh, and what what is first identifying what is our problem? Uh, well, the city is currently outgrowing or has outgrown its current space. Uh, what do those include? Uh, new city hall, uh, new city buildings could potentially include uh, public works, uh, could include a fire department building, could even include a new library. And so what are we really trying to accomplish with this project? We're trying to identify an area that we want the buildings in, uh, and then really looking for how are we gonna define this procurement? And what I mean define procurement, it might not just be for one building, it might be a series of buildings over the next ten or fifteen years. Trying to think strategic, trying to think a little bit bigger than the piecemeal acquisition of one or two buildings, uh, trying to build a strategic plan for the city uh, as you grow. Uh, and part of that strategic plan is managing uh, both public expectations, uh, along with managing the limited taxpayer dollars that you have available. So how do we how do we solve this problem? Uh, and I think I like to look at procurement slightly different when it comes to public buildings. Uh, historically, uh, cities and counties and states have really looked at this one solution fits all. We're gonna come up with a plan, we're gonna uh, put a building out for bids, we're gonna get bids, we're gonna build it and that's a one-size-fits-all. Uh, the public sector really doesn't go out and look for that innovation, really doesn't go out and look for what a building's gonna look like in thirty years and really rely upon the private sector for solutions. And so trying to turn the procurement on its head. And so our our initial step would be uh, to prepare what's called a request for information. Uh, and what this does is it engages the private sector. Uh, really what we're looking to do is we would define the city needs, so internally we would look at what's our long-term uh, needs for buildings over the next uh, twenty to thirty years. Uh, and then we try to gather as much information that we know about those needs. So it might be talking to the fire department about what do you think your needs are gonna be in ten years, talking to the city departments about what do you think your needs are gonna be long-term? Um, and then we put this together into a document, um, and we submit it to the industry. It's not a commitment uh, or a contract, uh, it's a request for information from the industry really to engage the private sector to find out if they have solutions. Um, you can reject all of the offers, like uh, somebody can come up with some really great ideas or really bad ideas, it's totally up to the city and the committee to reject those. All of the costs of preparing the response, so if somebody comes forward and says, I have a great idea for a building, I'm gonna build it using P3 and the city just makes availability payments over the term of thirty years, um, it's all their cost, it's not the city cost in coming up with the solution, which is the really attractive way, uh, reason behind this type of proposal is that you're making the private sector come up with some solutions and you're making them spend the money. Uh, at the end of the day, it will be advertisement for their services to a certain extent, but you have the opportunity to read through that and further refine uh, how you're gonna proceed with your development. Um, uh, so you can, and depending upon how you respond to your, uh, the responses to RFP, uh, that could lead to a competitive process then. Say you have a number of people that say, we think that lease purchases of city buildings is the way to go, uh, then the city would structure a competitive procurement using that idea. And so this is really the first step in what's the best way to solve our problem. Um, the general contents of the RFP, which would be presented to the commission before it would go out, we'd describe the city projects, uh, we'd have to identify what the stream of revenue is. Uh, it's sort of unusual in that normally the city comes up with a building plan and this is how much it's gonna cost and then we're forced to figure out how to pay for it. In this process, we designate this is how much money we have per year, private industry, you go figure out what we can do with this much money per year. Uh, and then you compete against each other. And so we're just. And so we're just going to describe the description that they would deliver the building. That could include lease purchases, it could include public-private partnership, traditional design bid build, it could include construction manager at-risk procurement, which are all permitted under North Dakota law. We would look for the prior experiences of these different parties presenting, so it's not just somebody that's done one building for a million dollars in a small town, we'd look for their experience. We'd also look for what location are they proposing at, do they own that land? We'd ask for some general pricing, just generally, what do you think this process would cost and how much, how fast do you think you could deliver it? And then they would be responsible to submit this information to the procurement committee. We'd set a date that they'd have to respond. We'd set a schedule for them to make presentations at a local industry day, so we'd go back over what our needs are, explain it. The public could attend, it'd be a public meeting, so you have some input. The procurement committee, as I'm calling them, would review the initial submissions. You get presentations, you'd have the ability to ask questions, and then you could decide whether you want to continue with the procurement. If you have a number of people that have really great ideas, we'd narrow it down and select the way to proceed. The procurement committee would, in general, and this gets up, you know, this could be altered, I just wanted to put some pen on paper so there was some discussion, but it'd include the City Administrator, Finance Director, City Engineer, Director of Planning and Zoning, and a City Commissioner, and just read through what the proposals are. So I tried to keep it brief, I can certainly answer any questions you may have. Once again, we've done no work on this, this is just a kind of a fresh way to look at procuring city buildings over a longer period of time.
Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. John, there would, I'm assuming there would be no cost to this upfront cost, just to send this out, and maybe a little, but nothing substantial?
There'd be a little cost, I mean, you'd have to prepare the request for information, you'd have to advertise it. It's not a, you're not asking for engineering drawings from a city hired engineer. You'd probably spend a little bit of staff time putting together how much money is available. There's going to be some initial prep, but it's mostly time from the city's perspective in assembling it.
Okay. Is there no questions? All right, thank you. Did they want an answer from us at all, or like this, okay, sorry?
One question that I would ask is, and maybe you want me to give you some more time till the next meeting, but to get some kind of feedback if you'd like us to pursue this option or not. We can wait, like I said, we'll wait till the next meeting, give you some time to think about it, get some thoughts together. I know Dan has some building plans too, and so we kind of need to mull things around, but just to kind of get some idea of how you feel about the idea of moving forward. So, thank you.
Thomas.
Just a question.
Commissioner.
From what I see in your proposal, John, it looks like we'd be under a lease-type arrangement, that's what you'd be looking at, not a actual procurement necessarily under this structure? I guess the question I ask is, the libraries want a new library forever, you know, and we've gotten asked several times, but I know Central Code describes at least a new building has to go to the vote of the public, so I'm just, maybe those pieces fit into your plan, but you know, what are the restrictions within our wants versus what we can do within the law?
Yes, so, great question. In the RFI, we would identify some of those restraints, but also, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be limited to a lease purchase agreement, it could also be a P3, it could be a construction management procurement, it could be somebody that's proposing a P3. And sort of, some of the other cities around the country are using this as a procurement model, in that we don't know what the best idea for the city is, and so let's kind of turn it on its head and see what the industry says to the best ideas. And maybe, maybe none of them are good, maybe we go back to the traditional, but it's sort of, it opens up the process, it gives you an opportunity to view what the industry can provide, and it also provides a level of transparency to the public in that you've explored these other options, so if you ultimately default back to the traditional delivery, you've looked at, you know, you can say, well, we've looked at these different options, we got some proposals, and they aren't any cheaper, I'm not saying they would be cheaper or more expensive, and then you can, it helps you make that analysis long-term, because my understanding is there are some longer-term building needs through the city, and trying to figure out how are you going to balance those longer-term building needs with the availability of tax revenues?
I guess that's, a follow-up question would be, as far as our needs, would we expect the proposers to assist us in that, or provide us with some insight as to what our needs are, or we're supposed to come up with a list and then go out and see what were your ideas? I mean, I understand, you know, the fire department's already done some long-range planning and know what they need, and the library has an idea of what they'd like, and we know City Hall is, we've done a lot of scrambling the pieces to get by, you know, and we know there's going to be a need for something in the future, so I guess, as far as the process, is that part of this process, or is that something we have to do first? Is we're going to figure out what we think we need, and then engage someone, or do we anticipate that perhaps the proposers would open that process?
So, great question. What I would suggest is that in the RFI, we would identify, just in general, what we think our employees are going to, the type of employee, the number of employees, and the number of residents will have over long-term, and let them come up with what they think the space needs are. Let them come up with, what do you think the building should look like, how much space per office? What we're seeing is that the space needs for different offices have, at one point, you talk to different architects, they're larger square footage, and some talk about less. Let them figure that out, let them come back with what they think is the solution. And that's the nice part about this process, is that you don't need all the answers when you go forward with it, you're just looking for some input from the industry, once you get that, then you get to choose which road you want to go down.
And one last comment, things keep popping in my mind, but as far as repurposing any facilities that we move on from, I think that would be important as well. We've got a, you know, brand-new police wing here, which is very serviceable, and they might need some additional space, but I'd hate to see a existing structure, whatever it is, just sit empty as well. So I think that's important to be a consideration of this process.
And I completely agree, Mr., or Commissioner Thorstedt, that what we would, what we would say in the RFI is that we have this existing property, and potentially, they, you know, one of the options could be building vertically here. And you sort of invite that input, and maybe they say that's too expensive, or maybe they say this space should be repurposed into something else. I mean, that's the nice part, is you get that input that you normally wouldn't get in the traditional process of just retaining an architect that's going to design a building for you. Because it's not, I think it's a different, it's a different look to procurement than what government entities are normally engaged in. So that's probably why you're, you know, this is a very strange process, a very strange idea, but it's really, it's thinking outside the box, a longer-term look, and how can we best utilize tax dollars?
Thank you, John. Questions? Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess kind of what I'm hearing here, that we really won't know anything unless we do this RFI. I mean, that will kind of answer the questions. Whatever we do, will kind of answer a lot of our questions. That was a comment. So Tina, what, do you want a recommendation, do you want me to move forward, to at least look at, or what are you asking for?
What we're asking for is, only when you're ready, the ability to move forward, to investigate this and prepare an RFI, to bring back to the Commission to consider sending out. So nothing would really get done, other than getting it all prepared and bringing it before you, and describing it in a public setting on what the process is again, and what the details are, and letting you come up with the answers, and then decide if we send it out. And again, it's a minimal cost at that point still, which is really good for the city and brings back some options for us to think about. At the end of the day, it doesn't require you to do anything. If we go through part of this process and you just say, stop, you stop, it's not, we're not, it doesn't hurt anything. But our request, my request would be to allow us to proceed to the RFI process, get the paperwork, get the papers ready, the packet ready, and bring it back to you for review, and either approval or denial to go forward with that. But if you need more time, we can bring this back at the next meeting as well.
I guess I'm okay with that. I'm fine with it.
Do you need a motion?
I, do you need a motion on that? I said I'm okay with it, and I'm getting...
I would prefer a motion, just so that we have, we have it in writing that, you know, I'm not just going off and trying to do a building.
To get in the packet ready to bring back to the Commission to look at, how's that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olson, moved by Commissioner Simmons. Is there any further discussion regarding the procurement procedure that's been outlined this evening for new buildings? Any further discussion? Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry. I just want to make it very clear that for the special public listening, where this is going to go, that this is just getting ideas on how to move forward with our city, because we are overcrunched, I think, and this is strictly ideas, folks, it's not a vote to do anything tonight. Make that clear.
Is there any further discussion? Are you now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is to review the change orders for improvement district number 2250. Mr. Scott.
Thanks again, Commission President Darvis, and members of the Commission. On your packet, you do have information regarding two change orders for the Segment III portion of the Shiant Street reconstruction. If you recall, Segment III is the portion that goes from 32nd Avenue to 40th Avenue. The contractor is Dakota Underground Company, and they are present here tonight, in case you have questions that I am not able to answer, they are more than willing to come up if needed. In the effort of trying to be brief, there's a pretty detailed summary, again, like I said, in your packet, but really, the two change orders, I did want to bring them both at the same time, however, they will be executed as independent change orders. So for the process of the meeting tonight, I will be asking and recommending approving both, but if the Commission sees the need to isolate them or take action independently, that's more than fine to do so, but for, again, for right now, I'm going to present them as a single action item. I will start with the very first, or the first change order here in the amount of This particular change order is regarding dirt work that was needed on the project. As you will see in the memo that was written summarizing the review process, the majority of this is what we think relating to more or less assumptions that didn't align. So when we design a project, we make certain industry standard-type assumptions. So for dirt work, for example, for design purposes, you assume that there would be a shrinkage factor of, say, 25%, so on and so forth. And those are used to estimate quantities, so that when you get a bid price, you have an estimated quantity, and the contractor has the ability to put an accurate bid to that quantity. So, not going overly into the weeds here, but for the most part, there was about 13,000 yards of excess dirt that the contractor had to work around and deal with, haul off-site, bring over to other areas that was not intended with the original bid of the project. Over the past few months, there's been a lot of coordination meetings in reviewing not only the original proposals of the contractor for an additional claim, but there, the meetings involve the staff from the Department of Transportation, City of West Fargo staff, our consulting engineers, as well as the contractor. Their initial request for additional compensation was in the realm of $298,000, and again, at this point, all parties through these meetings have agreed that the appropriate amount would be $222,708.20 moving forward, as again, a reasonable and justified compensation. And so before I go on to the next change order, are there any questions regarding the dirt issue?
Where's the dirt?
That's a good question.
Is it our stockpile of dirt, or is it the contractor's stockpile of dirt?
Well, what we've had to pay the contractor to do is to remove that dirt and bring it elsewhere. There was no room for it on the job. What we, what the designer originally intended was that between excavating out the retention pond, that is right next to our, actually, the item earlier tonight was for that landscaping business, our retention pond just to the south of that was excavated as part of this project. So between excavating that dirt and taking the dirt from the pipe installation, the original intent was to place that within the roadway. And again, what was determined throughout the project is that we were running into more dirt than we could use within our right-of-way, if you will, so that that material had to go off-site, hence we had to pay, or the contractor had to pay for additional trucking services, as well as additional handling services. I don't know specifically where all of it went. Again, that's a good question, if you would like to know the answer, that's where the contractor come up and answer.
Does the dirt have value?
Does the dirt have value? Well...
You're always selling dirt all the time.
Dirt can, yeah, dirt can certainly be a valuable commodity at certain times. We've run into other situations where we did stockpile dirt, and then we've been kind of, it doesn't sell right away, and after three years, we've had to pay to have that dirt removed. And so we spent a lot of money to actually haul it away after the fact, versus, you know, again, it can go the opposite way, and you can try to sell dirt. We've had a stockpile of dirt next to First Lutheran Church on 40th Avenue since about 2013 or 14, and it is still sitting there. We can't get rid of it by giving it away. So, but yes, there are times where, depending on, well, a flood season, other communities need dirt, but we run into challenges on where can we stockpile it, where can we keep it, and when we take those risks, and they are risks, and if they don't pan out, and someday we need to move that, you can pay a lot more money in the long run. So, again, through the meetings with the Department of Transportation and our consulting staff, the work that was done with this excess material, we felt was justified. So the DOT will be approving the change order contingent upon the City Commission's actions tonight.
That being said, is the North Dakota DOT sharing in this expense, or is this all the City of West Fargo's expense?
That's a great question. So, as everyone is aware, the amount of funding that we got from the DOT is capped. There's roughly $11.5 million that was provided to both Segments II and III. So Segment III, I think specifically of that $11.5 million, is receiving about $5 million. The overall project here is well exceeded that, so there is, you know, again, only so much money coming from the state. Now, whether or not we say that money is being applied to this particular change order, that's more or less a shell game, if you will. I'm not, at this point, the DOT is... I'm not, at this point, the DOT is able to process it within their system, which means basically adhering to the federal guidelines on spending federal dollars. It meets those requirements. But again, in the, you know, the grand scheme of a $50 million job, and 11 of it is funded, there is not an additional fund to come forward, if you will. We do plan holistically on both segments requesting additional funds if they are available. Sometimes at the end of a funding season, the state will have some leftover monies available to communities that have open grants. We can apply for some additional funding regardless of any change orders. We can apply for some additional funding. That's not going to, if we do get some, it's likely not going to be much, but we will make that effort.
I have a question.
Please.
You said the assumptions didn't line up. So who made the wrong assumption?
So if, well, our, and again, that's one way of saying it. This isn't all boiling down to one specific deal, but maybe I'll back up. In trying to resolve where this $13,000, or 13,000 yards of additional material came up, we had, KJ Engineering was looking into this. They ran their analysis. More Engineering ran an analysis. The contractor hired their, or an independent engineering firm to go through and run an analysis. And at the end of the day, we're all, all three were coming up with about the same quantities. No one could pinpoint exactly where something would have gone wrong, aside from there was a common agreement. And again, when I say a common agreement, that's between all the parties involved in reviewing it. So the DOT staff, their, our staff, that if you were to be off by a couple percent in terms of, okay, industry standard is to apply a 25% shrinkage factor. If the shrinkage observed out in the field was actually at 20% over the course of a mile, that can, that can skew some, some things off. So that's one likely component. Now, it is the engineer's job that is preparing that when they put an estimated quantity. But what I would say is that those are estimated quantities. Those aren't guaranteed. But yes, the engineer ultimately, again, the city engineer that would be reviewing the plans, and ultimately, the city commission that would have approved and bought into those plans have all agreed on that design concept. So again, it's a, certainly, it's a difficult, anytime we bring a change order, it's a difficult conversation. And this one gets a little more difficult because, again, we're talking dirt that is subject to, you know, things change, and such a large quantity on this job, it doesn't take but, you know, a handful of percentage points to be off, and you're talking a lot of money. So...
For clarification, Mr. Scott, the 13,000 cubic yards, is this from the excavation from the retaining pond where that dirt was piled there for two years? Or is this from dirt from the actual construction projects that the 25% calculation was wrong? What...
So let me clarify, yeah, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off there. But I want to clarify that the retention pond that you saw earlier tonight, that was expanded as part of this contract. So part of the contractor's work was to go out and excavate out the remaining portion of that pond. So there wasn't a stockpile there that was being removed. It was, the actual pond was being dug and shaped and finished. Under the 40th Avenue project in 2016, that pond was, the first phase of it was dug. But this segment three of Shiant Street basically finalized that pond. So yes, the amount of dirt that was coming out of there was originally planned, or at least, there's a whole dirt balancing thing, and I'm not intimately familiar with the exact features of the design. But part of the concept was, again, that material, as you excavate it out, could be placed within the right-of-way of the road as you build up the road. Part of what happened is in measuring that quantity with the quantity that's displaced by installing the pipes, at the end of the day, there was 13,178 extra yards of dirt generated. And when, when engineering is being done on something like this, you're taking, you're using a computer model to simulate a volume of dirt that'll be excavated. If you look at, think of like a jar of peanut butter. It's dense, right? It's very compact. There's no voids in there. I'm sure everyone's laughing about that. But when you think of that, it's in there about as tight and compact as it can be. So when you start running computer simulations and models on dealing with dirt, and when you have to take that out of somewhere, and then when it's in ground, it's tight, compact as it can be. You take it and you spread it on a roadway to be placed, compacted again, and then you build over top of that, there's now a lot of air voids in there. And so the same density, well, it's not the same, the density changes. And so the volume needed of in-place material to build the roadway up, those things have, again, industry standard factors that you apply. So when you take something out of the ground, you apply a 25% factor, if you will, on placing it over top of the right-of-way to build that up. And then calculating those things, that's where, when you're actually physically working with that material, that factor can change by a couple percent based on if it's lean clay, or fat clay, or silt, or whatever material that is. And that's where we're getting to, there wasn't, in going through this, there wasn't a design mistake necessarily. It was an industry standard of applying a factor, that factor in real life based on the dirt that was used, there was a bit of a, what we would consider a deviation from that assumption.
I don't recall the number of truckloads. So do you recall, Mr. Scott?
I don't, I don't recall the number of truckloads specifically. I can certainly dive into the...
I'm trying to do, what I'm trying to do is convert it into a layman's thing, is X number of truckloads versus 13,000, whatever, 13,000 cubic feet of dirt looks like.
Sure.
My point being, is to follow up on Commissioner Jurdavik's here, and I don't want to challenge you on a statement that you made, but it absolutely looks to me like somebody's computer model is off. Because in your experience, Mr. Scott, have you ever dealt with 13,000 cubic feet or hundreds of loads of dirt on a project that goes from 32nd to 40th? That's eight blocks, plus a retention pond, of course. That's, that seems like a huge amount of material.
Yes, I've dealt with projects with far more dirt. Not exactly sure, again, if, if the, to be blunt, if the question is, did the engineers screw up and should they be paying for this? The answer is no, not in my opinion, and not in the DOT's opinion.
Well, I'd have got to that question if I wanted to say that.
Right, that's where I just, I want to go there now. And that's part of in reviewing this and having multiple meetings with them and going through these numbers. And quite honestly, the amount of time that we end up having to pay consultants to dive into this and deal, and dig into all this stuff, in going through all of that, at the end of the day, it was determined that this is not an error that was made. This is not negligence in the design.
You got to the point I wanted to make.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that. One question, just to make sure I understand it. So the 5,427 cubic yards that were excavated from the pond, the plan for that dirt originally was to use that in the project and not to haul it away? The dirt from the pond was never going to be hauled away up until we decided we had too much dirt?
Well, yeah, so and that's where, again, the, if, when you look at the project as a whole, I'm not sure exactly where the quantity breakdowns. I'd have to get the original plans and the bid quantities to really be able to answer. So that's where I don't want to, 100% one way or the other. I believe, again, in general, there's a quantity summary here, and it talks about that there's 4,800 yards of pipe and structure waste, 5,400 yards of pond and stockpile excavation, and then 2,900 yards of material hauled due to decreased and shrinkage factors. So...
You know, I guess maybe, you know, going back to your prior comment, I mean, I think that's what maybe we're all, or at least what I was concerned with, is, you know, was there a mistake in here that we at least needed to be aware of? But, I mean, there's a lot of data in what's in the packet, and I've tried to make sense of it, but...
Well, and that's where, and, you know, I'll apologize too.
I'm comfortable.
With all that data, I can't say I'm familiar with the level of detail enough to answer with 100% certainty those specific questions. But what I can answer with 100% certainty is that between myself, our engineering staff, and the DOT, and their engineering staff, there was certainly not an error made by an engineering consultant, nor was there any fault of the contractor for this material having been generated beyond what they had bid. So again...
Do these need to be separate motions for the two change orders?
We can do it either way. I'd prefer two separate, yes.
First, unless there's more comments, I would make a motion to approve.
Item A for 200 and, what is it? I don't have it in front of me. You got me locked out.
Oh, 200 and something.
Yeah, 222,708.20.
Your second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Commissioner Jurdavik moved. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Jurdavik, do you have something else to add?
I did though.
Commissioner Simmons, go.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I just want to throw out there, the only other option, if we were to deny this, would obviously, Dustin, we'd end up in court, and then who knows where that would go? So, is that correct?
Commissioner Simmons, yes. That would be the next step. So at this point in the process, you know, the contractor submitted a claim. That claim was for, again, that $298,000. Through the contractual process of the DOT, we worked in terms of going through item by item of their claim and ultimately got to this number that we brought forward. If we were to deny it, the next step in the process is for the contractor to take that claim through the legal process.
Okay, and I'm comfortable with your answer. I just wanted to make that clear, that that would be the next option. And again, we don't know where we'd end up with that, so...
Yes, and we have gone through that before and...
Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Ding, now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the 222,000 change order? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now to the next portion of that, for the second change order. Again, Dustin, I'm locked out with, what is that, 100 and, oh, thank you, 106,679. And would you give us a brever, a detailed briefing of what that expense is, please?
So this next one here is relating to the intersection of 40th Avenue. If you recall, at the beginning of this project, there was, before construction even got started, there was a concern that the original plan was to shut down the 40th Avenue intersection and proceed. Of course, the situation with the 32nd Avenue and the other contract for segment two, that intersection not being fully open itself, it was down, basically reduced to one lane east-west, really started to generate that increase for concern of how are we going to get emergency services in and out of here? How the public going to, you know, what kind of delays and so on, so forth? So April 1st, city commission meeting, there was discussion on the, basically, commission directing staff to look at options to keep that intersection open during construction. Basically, that meant we were going to have to phase this. We worked with the contractor to get them options to keep it open. And then at the following meeting on April 15th, I came back with a report that the contractor had looked at everything and was estimating a cost of $200,000 to basically phase the project differently. And a lot of that is due to some of the inefficiencies that they were going to experience, and quite honestly, some of the concern with the completion dates. One thing I wanted to point out within the packet here in that memo is that when you start to critique or evaluate the cost of something like this, it gets, it gets difficult. It's not a measurable, even though the previous item on the dirt, it was relatively difficult to explain, but it's measurable. At the end of the day, there was a number of trucks that were hauled out, right? With this, we're talking measuring the inefficiencies and some of the added costs, some of the tangible costs are things like additional traffic control. That was relatively easy. But so through the, through the nature of the work, ultimately, at the April 15th meeting, having presented the $200,000, basically, the comments were, well, we have to proceed. Hopefully, we can come down from that. Hopefully, it doesn't cost that much. As that project got done, the contractor went back then and then looked at what the costs were, submitted a request for additional compensation, and that's where we're at today is this $106,000. Where I wanted to go with an interesting point, though, is in terms of the completion date, the contractor was, this contract has a $4,500 a day liquidated damage. I want to make sure it's not, that's not, I'm not misspeaking there, $4,000 a day, I'm sorry, $4,000 a day liquidated damage. For any day that they are not finished on that completion date that was established, they get charged $4,000. So when you work the math kind of backwards, the number of days that this revised scope or this intersection that remained open was about 32. And so when you take that times, say, $4,000 a day that they would have been charged if they were late, it puts it in the ballpark, if you will. That would have been $120,000, so, or 128. So at the end of the day, again, between the DOT, the engineering consultants, contractor, and my staff reviewing this, we felt that even though there's not a lot of things that you can tangibly measure, it was justified expense as, again, that at the end of the day, when you compare it to what they would have been charged for each day have been being late, it's, this is actually a less, they're requesting less than what we would charge. That's making sense. So we didn't quite hit 200,000, but $100,000 is still, $106,000 is still a lot of money, and that's, that's really what it took to accommodate that intersection being open. So we'll stop right there and see what questions come out.
Questions for Mr. Scott?
Question is 106,000 above the 200,000.
That's correct. And these will be processed through the DOT's system as two independent change orders. Again, I brought them in as one item, partly so that, as you see on the cover sheet here, one of the things I wanted to demonstrate was the current contract price and then a new contract price if each change order is processed versus trying to do that in two separate items, albeit one could be approved and the other not, both could be not approved. Again, I just wanted to, approving each of these, take it as a single picture that this would be a 3% or 3.73% increase from the original contract.
Additional questions for Mr. Scott? I'll make the motion to approve the second change order. Commissioner Olson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the dollar amount of $106,679 to, added to the original contract of $10,460,000. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just make the comment, I think this is the one that our citizens wanted. They wanted that road open. We all talked about this pretty heavily. We needed it done, so...
Is this the, is this it? Or can we expect additional requests? Or does this close out the contract?
It's a good question. Well, at this point, there are no other outstanding claims, or at least not... Well, at this point, there are no other outstanding claims, or at least, um, not that I'm aware of. There's always the process to submit a claim if something were to come up. This does not close out the contract. I'll, I'll answer that one very specifically. In fact, the DOT's process of closing on a contract takes two to three years. There is a, a limit of time that a contractor is eligible to file a claim. I don't believe they have any outstanding claims, um, after this. Maybe I'll look back to the contractor and...
I saw him shake his head, said he didn't.
No, so...
I can see how, how well they're received by the commission when we get the change orders.
Absolutely.
Let me, let me ask one question, as we're still in a discussion phase. Contractor at 32nd is different than the contractor that was on 40th, correct?
That's correct.
So there's no, you know, if there was, if it was a similar, if it was the same contractor, I'd absolutely vote no on this.
Understood.
Just so, as an understanding between our engineering department, uh, because, uh, the lateness of what they did on 32nd was atrocious and cost the city and, uh, a lot of goodwill with its public, uh, the traveling public and the, and what we had to do for, uh, detouring and the like. And so, uh, just so you know and for the public's knowledge, if these were the same contractor, it'd have a different, uh, posture on this this evening. So, we have a dis-, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any additional discussion? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next order of business. Discuss the rescheduling of February 17th, 2020 commission meeting. Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening again, Commission President and Commissioners. Um, February 17th is President's Day and that is a holiday, so my request to you would be to ask to move it from the 17th to the 18th.
Okay, with that. Jordan, gentlemen?
Need a motion?
Please.
I will.
Second. Been moved and seconded to move the, the next scheduled February city commission meeting from, uh, February 17th to February 18th because, uh, President's Day is on the 17th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business. Mr. Scott, construction updates.
Uh, thanks again, Commission President, members of the commission. Uh, as usual, there's, uh, recently, there hasn't been much to talk about in terms of construction, but one thing I do want to, uh, point out tonight, uh, especially after having gone through our core area infrastructure study, is an update to our, our road diet project, the downtown Cheyenne Street project. Uh, I, I believe you're all aware that, um, there were, this project was basically, um, delayed in terms of schedule. We are no longer, uh, planning the, the 2020 construction season. We are now shooting for the 21 construction season, uh, and largely based on, uh, getting some of the results of this, of this study, uh, it was very clear that we have very old utilities in that, uh, area or in that corridor. Water main is, um, uh, basically it, it ductile iron pipe and asbestos, uh, pipe, um, so it needs to get replaced, as well as the stormwater infrastructure out here. It was very clear in, in analyzing the stormwater results that, uh, we need, uh, bigger pipes, we need lift stations, we need, uh, um, lastly, retention where we can try to squeeze that in, but, um, most importantly, we need bigger pipes and, and the pumping capacity. So, some of that stuff is, is going to be now incorporated with our downtown Cheyenne Street project. Uh, we certainly plan to hold, uh, another informational meeting for the public, um, so, you know, ultimately, it's transitioning from more of a surface construction project to, uh, we'll be dealing with, again, utilities, so more of a, more, more, assisted with a full reconstruction. Um, I also want to point out, uh, there's been, again, the, the talk around our CIP. Uh, we really are nearing the end of, of having a, a final CIP. In the recent weeks, we've been, uh, working on, uh, working with more engineering to incorporate a lot of the core area, uh, stuff. Um, we do have a, a working spreadsheet, uh, in all fairness to, uh, other staff, I, you know, haven't really sent it around much. Uh, Jim and Tina are aware that it's there, uh, they've been able to take a look at a little bit of it, but, uh, really, uh, right now, we're at a point where it's time to turn Jim Lewis, if you will, and start crunching the, the financial numbers and, and then again, that will really start to drive our infrastructure funding policy, uh, conversations that we'll have. Uh, but I do want to find out that more engineering is working with a, a third-party consultant to develop a, an app, a web-based application that, uh, staff, public commissioners, we can actually go onto a website and play around with. Uh, you know, if you want to know what we have for water-related projects in 2028, it'll be a very user-friendly tool to, to go through and manipulate and, and report out, um, whatever kind of information you're looking for within our capital improvement plan. So, I, I had asked them to start, uh, working towards preparing a presentation for the commission. Um, we're hoping that, uh, either, uh, the next meeting or within the next few meetings, I guess, to, to come forward with just a, a presentation on what that will look and feel like, um, but more importantly, in the, in the backgrounds here in the next, uh, couple of weeks, hopefully be working a lot closer with, with Jim and the finance department on, uh, the funding aspect of our capital improvement plan. So, I guess with that, I would conclude my construction updates.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions? Yep, one question, would the road diet be moved back to 21? How does that affect that grant we got from Governor Burgum's office?
Uh, great, uh, great question, Commissioner Olson. Uh, the grants that we received, we're basically eligible, uh, for all of that money. Uh, it's a grant in the amount of 2,377,000 dollars, as long as we, uh, open bids, uh, by the end of this year. So, I believe the last, um, month is November that the DOT will open a bid, so we have to bid a project by November of this year to stay eligible for that funding. Thank you.
Just a question for Mr. Scott?
Yes, um, regarding the CIP, um, Dustin, um, Cheyenne River, you know, recently, uh, the county had put it on as a priority. I hadn't looked at the river sloughing and stuff like that, and I've, I've actually had a couple of people ask me about that. I understand we've moving forward with possible, uh, adjustments to the Cheyenne diversion project, but that's probably eight, nine, 10 years away. In the interim, is that something that we should be evaluating, any work that needs to be done, or is that something the water district should be doing, or should we be coordinating something there? Because there are, there are some significant issues within the core area of the city and, uh, on the Cheyenne River itself.
Absolutely, Commissioner Thorsted. Uh, the, the challenge, and, and I believe you, you mentioned it during the Cass County's presentation of their hazard mitigation list, the challenge gets to be is, is prioritizing, um, the need there. It, I'd say every property along the river, especially north of our gates, so north of I-94, is, um, certainly going to have stability issues at the riverbank. Now, there are obviously some structures that are closer than others, um, so from a, you know, a prioritization standpoint, you could maybe start with that. I would say within the CIP, what we are starting to identify are, um, um, just kind of a placeholder, uh, you know, a dollar amount that we could start to at least have as a discussion point or being able to do anything, but as we've talked about before, uh, this is all private property, so it gets difficult to start talking, spending public dollars to go, um, rehab or, or reconstruct, uh, private property, but, uh, the county's hazard mitigation plan, that's really, um, basically a plan that uses FEMA's hazard mitigation, hazard mitigation grants. And with those grants, there is still a 20% local share responsibility. So, for example, uh, the condo association, I recently spoke with them, um, you know, they've got three or four buildings, uh, between their, their condos and their parking, uh, garage. If, if we were looking at a project using that grant that would save $5 million to buy out, there would be a 20% local share. That's a million dollars, um, whether or not the city would want to start developing a, an internal policy that we will contribute to funding some of those things, or if those homeowners are going to have to pay that local share. I think if anything, um, it's going to certainly come to head when we start getting into the infrastructure funding policy, when we start talking about what is the city's policy on funding reconstruction projects versus new development versus, and this could just be another category versus, um, you know, whether it's a buyout scenario, whether it's riverbank stuff, but it could be a, a category that is, um, part of the discussion with our capital improvement plan. Uh, over the last few months, there's been a couple iterations that, uh, League of Cities has asked, uh, from municipalities to, to basically put together a list of, of needs over the next 40 years, and, uh, one of the categories they've had is, is flood protection. Um, so, when I looked at dollars and, and our need in, in West Fargo, I did try to come up with a number, um, but, uh, in, numbers specifically dealing with properties that are along the river that have issues with sloughing, but again, it, it's just, it's a difficult one to, to truly put a, a pin on and, historically, we just haven't, um, set aside any kind of funding to deal with, whether it's buyouts or, well, really, that's, that's about the only option that we have is, is we would have to start looking at buyouts.
No, my main concern is it's on somebody's radar and we just, uh, no, forgetting about it. Personal opinion, it's a federal project, it's a federal diversion, it's been used way more than it was ever anticipated and that's created a lot of the issues in the core part of town because of the, the type of diversion project it is. So, maybe it's better served by the water district or Corps of Engineers or whomever to address it and instead of just saying, okay, city, you fix the problems, you know, because of the project. Just as long as someone's got it on the radar and we're just not forgetting about it and someday we have lots of issues to take care of, all of a sudden, eight, 10 years from now, when they finally open it up and then all of a sudden, we have a whole, a lot of problems, so, uh, good, I, I know you're aware of it, but I just want to make sure that it's not just something that's forgot about as far as, uh, uh, something we have to address. I guess the last comment is if we can get Mr. Richard to put out some kind of comment about the, uh, deferral of the Cheyenne Street project, because, you know, a lot of people I talk to think it's happening this year and obviously it's going back a year, so...
Yes, it's a great point to make. Um, Melissa has prepared language, if you will, uh, the, the question's just been, when is, there, there's a lot of still moving pieces with the DOT and coordinating things, um, and it, the question has really been a matter of timing on when do we share, what, and what do we share, and what kind of questions are going to come out that are, are we, do we have those answers yet? And that's really why we've been kind of holding off on, uh, publicizing this thing, uh, because it's just been somewhat in flux. It became clear that we were delaying the project, um, but there were still a lot of unknowns and there's, there's still some things we are working with the DOT and that's where I, we'll certainly work with Melissa on, on how to release the information and what information to release, and then I, I just will reiterate that we will have more public input meetings. Not the type of meetings that we have to, uh, take the, the input on from the design aspect and the DOT's requirements there, but update meetings, if you will, and, and I foresee having one in the near future and will probably have another one before we go out to bids, so...
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Additional questions? Thank you for your update. The administrators report, Mrs. Fisk, item number eight.
I do not have any additional items at this time.
Item number nine, correspondence.
The only, um, item I have is that I handed you, um, Matt Van Bigg and Jim Larson had worked together to come up with the cost of snow removal for the last two storms, and I gave you each a handful of that, and you can see by looking at it that the cost for the last two storms has been 665,000 dollars almost. Um, that's very extensive, and Matt is here if you have questions or if you'd like to contact him later and talk through some of this, but I think they did an excellent job, but it's always expensive to keep people happy.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Um, I requested this last week to give us an idea of where we're at with regard to, uh, expenditures for the storm, uh, the, the document that Mrs. Fisk is referring to, uh, snowstorm number one and cleanup from December 27th to January 10th was 315,541 dollars. Storm, snowstorm number two, I hope this doesn't go on and on, but, uh, as the season goes on, January 17th to January 22nd was 123,167 dollars. And then at that point in time, uh, Public Works had visited with Mrs. Fisk, uh, Dan had also visited with me about some contracted snow removal of third-party contractors and, and hiring, uh, them to come in and, and haul some snow away. And at this point in time, that's 12 working days between January 6th and January 22nd, the city of West Fargo has spent 226,067 dollars on thirty-part, third-party contractors, uh, uh, four of them, to, uh, knock down the corners and, and widen the streets and that type of thing. So, uh, the number that Mrs. Fisk, uh, uh, shared with you, the 664,776, is inclusive of, uh, storm number one, storm number two, and the third-party contracted snow removal, so we've spent a lot of money, so... But as, uh, Mrs. Fisk, uh, stated, uh, our citizens and taxpayers have expectations of, uh, what the road conditions should be and, and the safety at, at corners and the like, so, Public Works, good work. Good spending money if you can. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the report very much. Uh, is there anything else on non-agenda items that anyone would like to speak to? Any department heads? Anybody? Okay, with that, at this time, we're going to go into a closed executive session pursuant to North Dakota Centric Code 44-04-19.1, uh, to receive an update and provide direction to the, to the city attorney regarding a legal matter. We are in executive session. Thank you. Mr. Shockley.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll reconvene the, uh, February 3rd, West Fargo City Commission meeting. Is there any further i- items that need to come before the, uh, commission this evening?
If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Simmons moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Olson seconds, been moved and seconded, that we, uh, adjourn the meeting of, uh, February 3rd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.